Okay, copies of the draft minutes from April 17th have been provided to the council members and posted on the city website. And copies of reports or minutes are on your desk as well. I'm happy to say that everybody seems to have been posting their reports judiciously. One, for those not familiar, they can be posted, they seem to be posted at two different places. Some are actually on the committee websites. I know Rob that they're on your website, if you think of them. And others tend to get into the, at minutes of meetings, but they're there. You can find them on the web. If you haven't been submitting your reports or minutes, please do. Communications. I'm gonna do this in reverse order because the second one required a little less information. The first one is a simple communication from the Hudson American Legion Post inviting us all to parade with them on Memorial Day, Monday, May 28th. It'll begin at 10:15 at the Veterans Monument in Seventh Street Park. And then we'll line up and we'll parade on Seventh Street after the wreath ceremony, march down Orange Street, and across Fourth Street to the Port House Park where the Memorial Day services will be held. After completion of the service, refreshments will be served by the Salvation Army at St. Mary's. And that's that. The other communication, which we can discuss or not, is from the mayor. The mayor vetoed our resolution where we asked to have an independent council. What happened afterwards is, after that resolution went through, is that Eileen and I met with the mayor and we just, and Andy, I should mention, and the council. And we had a very productive discussion in which our council made very clear to us that he serves us equally as he serves the mayor. And in fact, most of his time had been spent serving us. And that if, and correct me if I'm wrong or anything, but if, if we'd come to an issue where we feel either at odds with the mayor, or we want to, you know, get somebody independent on, say, a specific issue, he's happy to step aside and let us get someone else who fits the case. Now, if you want to discuss this further, we could go into executive session, but if there's no problem with the veto, I suggest we just move along.
So we have the opportunity to request, to be excused, or in a situation that we feel that there's a conflict with the council, a legislative...
Yeah, what, you know, without going into it too long, while you're ready to talk. But, you know, what I pointed out was, under the Second City's law, it actually says that corporation council serves the county council as well as the departments of the city. And that those departments and officers don't have the authority to retain council. That, you know, that is done pursuant to the charter by the mayor. And that if there became a situation where there was a legal problem, where the council, hypothetically, and the mayor were at odds, frankly, I wouldn't be representing the mayor or the council, because I represent the city.
Understood.
Right? And so then you would, you would entertain, you know, if you were at that point where there was going to be legal action, then you would address it. And, you know, this is something that came up back in 2006. There was a proposal to modify the charter, and it went to a referendum. That legislative process is still available. But, you know, I just want to, you know, I made it clear to the mayor and to the council president that, you know, I view my client as the city of Hudson. And that if there becomes a legal problem as opposed to a legislative or governance problem, that sort of, you could look to address it. And I think the mayor probably would be open to addressing it that way as well.
Kamal?
How did this meeting come about with yourself, Alderman, Tyler, and the mayor? And why were those the parties that were in the meeting?
The mayor had asked me to come to this meeting alone. And I requested that Eileen join me, partly because she'd been pushing, and I believe she was angry, oh, sorry, along with you, who put forward the resolution. The only way, the mayor didn't want a lot of people there. So I went ahead with that meeting with the understanding that we would be able to talk about it amongst ourselves further, if that's what we wanted to do. In other words, it wasn't just like we made the decision with the mayor and Andy and Eileen. It was just, just to, I don't, you know, want to really, the mayor wanted to keep it small, that's really what it was.
Yeah, I just find it a little unprofessional that, you know, if we are going through the motions of making resolutions and stating our opinion and held out the meeting, that it could have been information pertinent to our decision, we didn't have the opportunity to hear what that information was.
I agree. And the first thing I said was, I'm gonna take this back to the council and see if they want to reintroduce it or not. I mean, it's not, it's not dead, if you want to keep this alive. I don't know what more to say. I agree with you that it would have been nice to have that discussion with more of us there, but that wasn't gonna happen.
I'm not like, this, it's not super important to me, but if we're going to state that we're gonna be a council, like, that's gonna be transparent, and that's what everyone in here ran on, being transparent, then I feel like we have to be transparent. And that is not transparent. That's not transparency. And these small meetings, like, I don't see the reason for these small meetings unless they're to contain control of things. And if that's, you know, what we're going after, then that needs to be brought to the table. And we need to know exactly if I'm voting on a resolution that's for no reason and wasting my time and the city's time, that I would like to know that ahead of time.
I agree. It was not my, the way the meeting was done was not my decision, and there was a lot of back and forth about how that meeting was to occur. I, you know, if you want to, I don't know where to take it from, man. You know, I mean, I wish it had been a full meeting with the mayor, but that's not what he wanted.
But would that have, has it have been a public meeting then? Because we would have had more, we would have had a forum, and then it would have been an open meeting in the first place. Right?
Yeah. You know, yeah.
And you also had a time, you had a time factor, because you had certain days that were expired, based on the resolution and the mayor's, you know, opportunity to veto it if necessary. So he wanted to hear from representatives of the council about the resolution. I wanted, I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what the legal, if there was a legal problem, because I wasn't aware of the resolution.
That's, that's the whole thing. You didn't know it was an issue until you know it's a resolution, so you're feeling like, what did I do? We want to know what's going on, so we know what should we do. You know, if we need our own attorney, why do we need our own attorney? And where do we go forward from there? Who would be those recommendations? But, you know, I totally agree with Alderman Johnson here, you know?
I do too.
Even if, you know, the mayor and you all decided to have a private meeting...
No, it's not, no, wait. No, no, I am, I mean, I'm interrupting you, it's not how it went.
But even if you all decided to have a meeting with certain members included, the entire council should have been there. An email stating that there's a meeting that will be taking place. If there's any questions or concerns of yours, please state it, so we can address it during this meeting. And then one of us can say, well, we want to be there too. That's all.
Well, I didn't write this veto message, and I don't really think that it was fair to perhaps include Eileen and me in this. We did have the meeting, we did say we were bringing it back to you, and that's what we're doing right now. So in other words, we can be asking Andy the same questions that we're asking at the meeting. There was no, you know, there was no conversation that's not still open.
What was the issue, Andy?
The legal issue? I don't believe there was one.
You mean, was there a specific issue that we were asking Andy to, what, you mean? No, it was just a general resolution of whether we wanted to have our own council. Eileen?
And it was exactly the question that you asked just now, that attorney asked at the meeting. We had been saying, the mayor asked why the resolution, and, you know, we said to assert, you know, we're equal, equal body, you know, with the executive. And we talked about some of those things, the agenda issue. And then what Andy had said was, well, what has been the conflict? What is the subject that's out there unresolved where there's a conflict? Because we explained quickly that it wasn't to not have Andy as our attorney, it was to feel independent and to assert that we are a co-equal body.
But it did not happen as our attorney. But it is to not happen as our...
Well, it was to hire a, hire a attorney. In my mind, when I said the resolution, I was hoping he could hire even for us, to be honest with you. But that would have been, you know, going on. But when he asked the question, well, what is the conflict that you have in front of you? There isn't a conflict law. There was, I'll say it in my own words, there was the need to assert the fact that we're a co-equal branch of the government. So once Andy said what Tom just described, that anytime there is either the perception or real conflict, he is certainly amenable to us using and doing, you know, what we should, so...
And more importantly, we can still, we can still keep this open.
And just to Tiffany and Kamal's point, I think this is actually a good, maybe a learning, learning point for us, that when we have a resolution that goes that we think's gonna be vetoed, and there's a discussion that we have, that we have three, you know, there's four out of six people that can attend the meetings, and we don't have a forum, so...
We could have a caucus, and it does not, I send you all, Robert Freeman's involved in the meeting.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying if the mayor's asking to have a meeting, I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you, that Tom can say, the mayor's requested this meeting, he has to vote on this veto, if it takes a number of days. Who is interested in having this discussion and having that discussion? I think it's just, I think it's a good, it was just a good learning.
I just, I just want to say, like, I think it's important for the city to understand that we're here for a reason, that, you know, we all have an important job. I mean, the mayor is essentially the leader of the council, he's the overall, well, I know this is exact to you, but, but like, he makes a lot of the decisions on whatever we make resolutions about. But we're also taxpayers and active voters and citizens, so essentially, he works for us as well.
Right, and you can realize, we can override the veto if you want to do that.
I mean, it's not even just about this particular resolution, it's about future resolutions to come, that, you know, this, this type of, you know, dysfunction, this shouldn't happen. We all ran on something that's opposite of...
I guess I'm confused. You're saying the mayor shouldn't be allowed to veto one of our...
No, he can veto whatever he wants, but backdoor meetings that we're just finding out now shouldn't happen.
I'm not sure how it's a backdoor meeting if I, if I...
I mean, I, I was the one who seconded this resolution, but yet I was not included in any of these meetings. Or you could notify that they were going to...
So, I'm sorry, so when I stand actually right now, what are our options? Like you said, we can go ahead and we can veto this resolution to open it back up.
Right.
Fine. Or, you know, I mean, or we can close it. If people feel that they weren't included, I wouldn't, if my process is correct. Motion to, to, to vote on this, to veto the veto?
To override the veto.
To override the veto? Sorry.
We can vote again if we...
Is that, is that possible? So we can open this up? We can have, we can have the meeting where everyone feels involved, and then we can move, and then we can move forward, and we can revisit this, and...
I guess that's what I'm trying to say, Kamal, is that, yes, I was in the mayor's office. He wanted me there alone. I asked to bring Eileen in, just because she was very concerned at that moment about it, and had been the one who introduced the resolution. But the understanding from the get-go was that this was gonna become a conversation in the council. It was not, I mean, just because he vetoed it doesn't really signify in his case, you know what I mean? It's like, we're talking about it right now.
Well, I think the other point is too, is there's nothing that prevents you from having a further conversation tomorrow. You don't have to, you don't have to take any action to have that discussion, but you can certainly do that. And I'm certainly willing to have a discussion with you or with anybody else.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Tom?
Sure.
Andy, you said 2006 to the referendum, what exactly was that referendum in 2006?
There was a local law proposed to modify the charter, to give the common council the authority under the charter where appropriate to retain council.
And what held it up?
It's my understanding it went, and I had not, like, done a lot of research, but it's my understanding it did go to a referendum and did not pass. But that is part of, and that is part of the legislative process that you have. And one of the things that, you know, we did talk about is, you know, your power as a council derives from your legislative power, and you can certainly exercise that. So, you know, there's, my big concern, as Eileen highlighted, was, okay, is there a legal conflict that I'm not aware of? Because if so, I want to know about it and address it appropriately. And it's my understanding at this point, there is not, and there was not. Okay? And that's why I kind of reiterated, and I'll say it again, if you look at Section 201 of the Second Class City's law, duties of the corporation council, it states, "The corporation council shall be enacted as the legal advisor of the common council and of the several officers, boards, and departments of the city." And so, you know, that's typically what this role, you know, how that role, that's how this role is carried out in cities both larger and smaller than Hudson.
So, real quick, according to the charter, if this resolution went through, the mayor was still appointing a council for us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what, where are we going? So either we want to choose our own council and go down that route, or...
What was allowed last time this happened, not in 2006, but more recently, was that the mayor, the mayor at that time said, yes, you could have your own council, and yes, you could pick it. But that was all the mayor's discretion, it was not by code. You follow me?
Right, so that's where the referendum came into play?
No, the referendum was at earlier time, when they actually pushed it to, to put it into the, to the code.
Okay.
So that it would be a matter of law that we had our own council. And, you know, that's always the possibility, if we want to go that way.
Well, I just think we're backpedaling if we, if we pass a resolution and still saying, he can still pick the old council. So do we take the energy in time, recommend a referendum, and do it the right way? Or do we just, like Kamal said, have all these meetings that's not gonna come into play anyway, in fruition? So you want something that at least had, you know, some kind of light to it, or purpose?
Well, this, this resolution wasn't to give us the power of the current council. This resolution was to allocate the money that's already allocated in the operating budget for the city of Hudson, which is a set amount of money, put aside for council, council, as opposed to the mayor's council, and to be able to use that money. That's what I understood the resolution to be, it wasn't to give us the power. He's still, even if this resolution passed, and we said we wanted council, it's at the mayor's discretion to pick that council, unless he gave that, unless he gave that to us to do. So that's not part of this, this is a...
But it's really important, and I speak to Kamal's concern. I want you to know, this was in no way what would be called a backroom sort of decision by the mayor and Eileen. This was a willingness to say, we are going back and make the argument for why the mayor would like us to keep one council for the city. But that's not done. That's not done. If you want, you know?
I understand, and I have full faith in your baby as contract...
It was a testy meeting. Trust me. Anybody else want to talk about that, or?
Did you want to propose to...
I just think we need to talk about it. We should talk about it.
Yeah.
Here, what we want to talk, we want to...
Because what is it, what is it? It's to allocate the budget, like, for...
And the money's in there, not, 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 it's near market for us.
You guys speak up?
Sure. The money, the money, I was just saying that the money in the, in the budget's actually allocated for us, and, you know, so if we need council, there is money that's in the budget. So it's there already.
Right, to Dominic's point, are we actually addressing an issue that we want resolved? I'm not, I'm not...
I think you should just move forward with the resolution and see how the future holds. You may need an attorney, may not.
A resolution or a, or a charter?
The veto, the waiver.
Okay.
So we never know.
Right, so...
The Easter funding is there.
We will consider a veto at our regular meeting. I mean, override it at our regular meeting.
Excuse me, is that what you meant? I thought you meant to let the veto sit up. I just wanted to make clear, okay. Got you.
We have some resolutions, far less controversial. The first is the Commissioner of Deeds, name you're all familiar, Michael R. Do I have a first? Do you want a second, Tiffany? Second resolution is designating the Register Star as the official newspaper of the city of Hudson, commencing on May 1st through April 30th. May 1st of 2018 through April 30th of 2019, pursuant to Hudson City Charter 1222. Can I get an introduction and a second? Calvin? Second?
Excuse me, just to clarify, so the point is, is to say that the Register Star is the official newspaper, and that's like any sort of notices and things like that?
Public, it's about the public notices.
Got you.
Fair enough. But we think, you know, we do circulate them to other places as well.
Okay.
But this is the official.
Got it.
All right, fair enough. So remember that when you're taking applications for various...
Right.
The next is the resolution, although it's a whole thing, it's rather long, as you can see. And it was, actually, if, would you, Kamal, you talked about this at the meeting, at your meeting, right?
This was a couple of months ago. I know the police chief was telling us they need to update their manual, their policy, and they're looking at a database that includes new trainings, up-to-date trainings, and things like that. I mean, the last time their manual was updated was, it's a long time ago.
Oh, yeah. You wanted to...
So the manual's actually literally a manual, it's a big binder, and there's a lot of contrac, well, I shouldn't say that, there could be contradictory memos in it that says you could do this, but you can't do this, so there's really no kind of replacement information in there. So what it's doing is, it's digitizing this information, so it'll be in a digital database, so it'll be available to all the officers at any time with the most updated, accurate information. And also, if an officer has to sit down and do a certain training, because the state said a certain training needs to be done because the policy's there, it pushes that training out when they sign into the computer, so that they're fully compliant with everything, so that there's no, so that if something should occur in an arrest or something like that, that there's, you know, it just gives them a better, more solid footing along.
Any other questions? Kamal?
Can I have an interject?
I have a second, Kamal. And lastly, I want to rich talk about this. It's a resolution appointing the members to the tourism board as a call, whereas 275-41 of the code established the tourism board for the city of Hudson, and 27541A13 further provides that four members of the tourism board shall be appointed by a common council and shall serve at the pleasure of the common council. And whereas pursuant to the foregoing common council wishes to appoint members to the tourism board, now therefore be it resolved that Jeffrey Hunt, David Brown, Ellen Thurston, and Jamie Smith Quinn are hereby appointed to serve as members of the tourism board pursuant to Hudson Code 27541, and shall serve at the pleasure of the common council until December 231st, 2019. Which, would you like to explain the process on how this was determined? I think we have, the resumes are attached, right?
Yes, the resumes are attached, or, and/or LinkedIn profiles.
All right, another thing.
These four people, so as of the last, the last... It was announced, this, that anyone who was interested, please contact me. Although this tourism board has been in the works for some time, since last July, when the lodging taxes passed. So, and then there were various amendments over the past few months, so people were aware that the tourism board members were going to be appointed. So over the past few months, too, I've had other people, people approached me, people approached me recently. So these are the four people that I think represent a diverse group here in the city of Hudson, and...
These four people were appointed by the mayor?
No, no, these are ours. Yeah.
And who, who chose these four people?
The Economic Development Committee vetted the application. They were solicited from anybody, anybody who wanted to put them to our story, we made it.
I'll go over each person. Jeffrey Hunt is from the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce, the CEO there. David Brown from the Lodging Community, he runs a bed and breakfast in the second ward, 261. Ellen Thurston, who has served here on the city council, who has served on the Columbia County Supervisors, who has done many events here within the city of Hudson, the list goes on and on. And Jamie Smith Quinn, who is the executive director of the, she's the executive director for the firefighters museum in the fourth ward, and they have a lot of...
I might add, I don't think the mayor's picked his yet, so...
That was my next question.
So I, if you configured more people, you should probably, you know, solicit the mayor with applications for the other positions. Yes, Tiffany?
Well, being that the mayor hasn't chosen... Being that the mayor hasn't chosen the four yet, shouldn't we wait on this resolution?
I mean, you can, you don't have to. You're empowered to appoint four people as a council.
I mean, we don't have to wait for the mayor.
It's supposed to be a total of eight members.
Right.
Well, there's nine people total.
Oh, right.
There's nine people total under chair and then there's four people appointed by the common council and there's four people appointed by the mayor. I think at this point, the law is in place and we're looking to start the board. I haven't, I don't know if the mayor is in a position to appoint these people at this time, so.
No, I think we should wait because the main cause of conflict, we don't want to start it with four people making decisions and then the next four.
No, no, they won't start. They won't start without your consent.
Well, no, it's not gonna start. I mean, I can confirm that the mayor will be for the next meeting if he's ready to appoint his four.
So do I have an introduction? And a second. Kamal. Okay, last month we tabled this resolution about increasing the boot. And I understand the police committee meeting came up again, but they, it doesn't seem like they answered what we really wanted answered.
Yeah, I mean, to make the long story short, it really comes down to the tow companies wanting to get more of a bang for their buck if they're showing up. And that's the main reason for the increase.
So that's, yeah, I forgot what it was from.
Yeah, and they have to, one time they have to come in and put it.
Yeah.
And they have to come second time to take it off again. That's why I like.
So the increase is mainly to serve the towing company, whoever puts the boots on and on. So it's been tabled, but do we want to introduce it now? I guess so. Why not? What would you like to say?
Well, we have a question. Nick Zalko's first board resident. Is there a fee that's paid to the city and a fee that's paid to the tow truck drivers?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I. But the increase is apparently not going to the city. It's going to the tow truck people. What? No, that's what Kamal said.
No, it is. It's a 150. It goes to tow trucks, not that, please.
Yeah, this is just dealing with the vehicle moving.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick comment?
You can say no.
Sure.
I was just, I was disappointed to see this come back just because I had this happen once when I first moved to Hudson, where I got a bunch of tickets for the opposite side parking. They went past the, they got pretty high. Next thing you know, boot, had to pay the city, I remember, I think, yeah, and then had to pay the tow truck driver. So it ended up being like 500 bucks. Plus, when you go to work, your car's booted, so you can't go to work. Then later on, the next day you call and you have to wait for the tow truck driver to come on their schedule to come unlock it and do that. And so it was really, it was difficult for me, but I can imagine somebody in other circumstances, it could be like devastating to somebody to have that happen, miss work, have to pay a couple of weeks' wages. It was, it's pretty heavy for a lot of families, I imagine, in town to have to go through that.
Kamal, do you feel, I mean, how do you, do you feel that we should let this go forward or do you think that?
I mean, I just, me personally, I think that the vehicle boot is a terrible idea. And it was only taxing to the people who live in the city, but this is a democracy, so it's up to the council.
Did you feel that the police in your, in your meeting justified the increase?
The point that they made was that there is, you know, a large number of people who owe money for tickets and see that, and there's no way that they're recouping that, those money. But I just don't know how this is going to help if, you know, you're adding on to a bill that they can't already pay.
I don't know if this allow, I mean, the mayor, who decides on the booting? And who decides that whether to boot or not? Some mayor decision?
Well, it's, no, no, it's part of the whole parking regulations. So it's, yeah, it's dictated by infractions and tickets issued. And certain locations, you know, allow.
So how did, how did they stop?
This is just looking to increase the fee.
Right.
And so, and to be clear, it's not out, it's been tabled. So until such time as you introduce it, second, it's not pending.
They are looking to reestablish the boot, the 15th of this month, is that? Yeah, the 15th of this month.
Did they say it would happen if we don't put forth an increase and then continue the boot?
They said they still feel like the companies would still go forward with using the boot.
At the 110 amount, so then the 150.
Yeah.
That was just a statement made by the chief.
Yeah, the chief said like this 110 to all the 12 companies, they're like hesitant to come in or something like that. That's what, that's the reason. Don't increase 150 dollars, 30 dollars, so you know.
So, and I know we have very thin minutes prior to us sometimes, but how did we go from a booting city to a non-booting city two years ago, to a booting city again?
Well, that's, that's about true.
Where did the boot go?
And there's no, there's no notes on records.
Was it the mayor's too? I think she, didn't she?
I mean, not that I'm aware of.
I looked, I looked it up and there's no notes, there's no notes on records.
Who is, is he different now to make different decisions?
And legend has it that our previous mayor made that decision to get rid of the boot. And it was because people were, the cars were being booted on the weekend. And when that happens, you can't get it off until Monday. So that was causing.
And is that not gonna happen under the new board?
I asked that. The chief said that they figured by the 15th of this month, when they bring it back, that all of that would be ironed out.
They said the police department will, they don't like doing it, but they could take the funds.
Yeah, but they could also take, pay them on the weekend. But like we had the new station.
Rich, I mean, I apologize because I didn't go to the police community to hear this, but, I mean, what, I mean, obviously at one point, if we did not boot cars, is there another solution than to getting parking tickets paid and?
I don't know.
That would be the question.
A tow would probably be, that's, from time to time, there's been tow trucks that came in. So now there is no booting.
Correct.
None. But it will restart at some point, whether we pass this or not. It's only a question of what the fee will be.
Because notices went out, right? Didn't he say notices went out to everybody?
Yeah, they're going to be.
But can we have the chief come to the next meeting to explain to the whole council? Because some of us could not be at the end of the year.
And maybe the history of it too.
Or maybe someone from the parking meter department?
No, that's the chief now. They've taken it down. Okay, so we'll keep it tabled and have the chief come at the next, see if he'll come to our informal meeting, I mean, our formal meeting to discuss it. Yes?
I just want to thank the Hudders, the Hudson Summer Festival Board. They have all the information on everything that's going on for the summer in the City of Hudson. It's beautiful, especially when you have your family members that come up to visit you and leave the kids with you for the summer up here. You know, giving things to do. And I want to thank you.
This year, as in last year, it's also available electronically.
You gotta put the camera on you then.
I know, I can hear me.
Thank you.
Where is it available electronically? On the city website?
On the city website, yeah, and also on the school, Hudson City School System website.
Beautiful pictures of the kids.
I want you to know that the proposed local law number three of 2018 is on your desk and we will be voting on that at the regular meeting. It's the one to increase the parking meters from eight to 10 dollars. Is there any other old business that anyone on the council would like to discuss? Any new business? Sure shot.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to share with my idea about the Donald Act Law.
Okay.
For, I'm to let if city government buy that Donald Act laws for the City of Hudson and it should be good for city government and good for city residents. Like, you know, all offices are one place. There's big parking lots, there's like a park and handicap system. Like the youth center, court enforcement building, all city offices in one place. And it's a great idea, I believe, keep city by that belief.
I agree, and I think we should begin this conversation in the Economic Development Committee. Sorry, Rich.
And.
And I mean, we got a couple of other buildings, like the old police office building.
Right.
Which is empty right now.
Right.
And all other buildings, like the youth department building, if we sold the building.
Sure.
We got, I believe we got enough money to buy that one and de-ave that one.
Well, that's why I think Economic Development is the place that can sort of start figuring out the technical aspects of how we go about doing this. And I assume we have to have the mayor involved at some point as well. And, you know, there's a lot of steps to getting it done. As you know, the school system has to put up for a vote to the entire school district at some point. That's later in the process. But for now, I think we should definitely start the conversation in our council and try to figure out how we do it.
If, so the current status is what? The current status of the building is what?
It's up for sale based on the.
Yeah, it's up for sale.
So it's a question of, you know, figuring out what the school system is going to want for it, what the debt services on it and how that's going to be taken care of. Figuring out what we would put in there. And then of course we have to deal with the opposition or maybe, maybe, maybe not, the council who has their eyes on it. At one point they wanted the whole thing. Now they're not so excited about it. It's, there's questions of remediation that involve, that are involved. And who knows what that's going to cost, you know, there's tons of issues that I'm sure you'll very much enjoy starting to figure out.
And what else? I mean, also the finance.
Right.
See, the finance.
Right, and to figure out, and also to figure out the process, you know? I mean, how do we as a council move forward if I'm not, what is the process? What do we need from the mayor if we decide we want that building?
Resolution by.
The resolution by, right. Okay, was it, so thank you, oh, sorry, Tiffany?
I just wanted to give the city an update. The City of Hudson took the lead on passing a resolution in support of the New York State Commission Bill on prosecutorial conduct. And with doing that, Hudson was the first and then Syracuse as well as Yonkers. And just if anyone want to update, tonight it will be presented in front of Albany's Common Council. So keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you, Shashaf, for introducing that. We'll start that conversation now. Any, any other business? Ross?
Yeah, Tom, I'd like to kind of throw out if somebody has some background on this too because I don't have all the background. I heard over the weekend, there was a, HDC had a meeting in the beginning of April about the CAS development and the proposals or the responses to the RFPs that went out for the CAS development Montgomery Place programs. And I know that they were presented and I guess that the next step is there are site visits and things. But I wasn't able to go to that meeting in the beginning of April on the 4th, I think at noon. Tom, I think you sit on the board, correct? And.
Starting January.
Starting January, right. Again, I know we all have very thin files, but, you know, Eileen, I don't know if you know anything from your prior time here in the city about that or I just, I want to open it up because I have a lot of very concerned first ward constituents about how the process is.
Well, it is a disconcerting process in many ways. HDC, and this is strictly my opinion, is a agency, a closet agency that I think is outdated and probably should no longer exist. And that's, and actually I would like our attorney to look into how does one get rid of an LDC? Which is technically called.
A C P.
Called an LDC, as you know. ours is HDC, Hudson Development Court. My understanding was they were established in the 70s in a lot of places as a way to take government out of the process. And right now in the process, the mayor and I have, are on that board by virtue of our, our job as mayor and common council president. But of course, we are very, very much outnumbered. And more importantly, this process started a while back and so we had no input. And if you want to talk about back, I don't know if I'll call it back room, but they have, they've had a tendency in the past to call for the executive session with reckless abandon, in my opinion. And that's led to a lot of things happening that no one has really known anything about.
And this is the second bill, or is it not? Isn't this the second RFP process?
I believe that's correct. Now, Eileen, you are a member of HDC. I don't, I don't want you to feel that you have to be defended or anything. This is just.
No, no, it's been that kind of night. I'm fine. My cheeks are already red, so I'm in full makeup. So yes, there was a prior request for proposals. There was a proposal accepted and then the hard work of figuring out how to make it happen and vetting the folks whom you think are the best among the bidders. And that came apart. The, the successful bidders at the time wanted the city to be able to do some kind of a swap in order to get the CSX property that sits right in between Front Street and the CAS building. I think those thoughts are still maybe ongoing. But then more importantly, by mutual consent, the board and the group that they had chosen, it just didn't feel as right anymore for either party. So both parties stepped away from it. And then I do want to defend HDC from my period of time on the board. I, I never saw the executive session abused. I feel much, much as many people do that, you have to say clearly and it ought to be what the narrow definition of that is. I think there have been some things by way of having meetings as open as theirs are that I know for one of the former chairs at HDC, after that first deal fell apart, we were just talking as a board about, well, you know, what are we going to do with it? We'll bid it out again, but why don't we see if we can get, you know, something, some kind of income coming in from there? And there was just a discussion like we might have about what to do about something. And it said, well, you know, the two other buildings are stable. Maybe we can use it for parking and a little cash flow. And it became a plan in word around town. And it was tagged on that former chairman when it was, it was just a discussion. So I found it's a volunteer board. It is a hardworking board. I think if we're going to move towards recommending dissolution, I think we ought to thoroughly, thoroughly understand the intent of the legislation, put it there. The work that they do, that is very valuable. And it also serves as a toggle one, see three. The way that they have CAS, it matters because the way that they have CAS, when CAS was leaving Hudson. leaving Hudson, the IDA was going to claw back some of the tax advantages and CAS agreed to turn the property over to HDC to be developed by the city, by HDC on behalf of the city, instead of having CAS sell it. So I just think if we're going to recommend.
No, I think we've got a real discussion about it.
Really understand.
But I think the idea that Hudson Development Corp, when we have an Economic Development Committee, there's already redundancy there, as well as having an IDA. I mean, granted, there is the nonprofit option, but that can be circumvented in other ways as well. So I agree that this has to be, it's obviously not going to be done tomorrow, because Andy's got other things to do. But I agree, it has to be, you have to understand exactly what it was intended to achieve and how, again, in my opinion, it doesn't achieve that. Tiffany.
I just wanted to say, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion and I'm not here tonight to debate with you, but I totally disagree. I did serve on that board as well and I agree with Council President Tom here because from the backdoor meetings, the decisions that were made, how they were made, my experience on there, you know, it should be abolished, my opinion.
And again, my point is I want to get it on the radar that this RFP is out there and they're being reviewed and it's in the first word and there's a lot of things going on in the first word and it just feels like, it feels like there's a lot of gears spinning between that and DRI and everything else going on right now. It just, it's, it'd be nice to have some arms around things a little more.
Right, instead of waking up and finding out they've made a decision that.
Right, that's what I worry, right, that's what I want to, I think that's what the concern that was relating to me this weekend.
Right, my own, you know, I, being brought into the process so late and not getting part of the RFP process, I never understood why it was determined from the get-go that it should be a single developer doing the whole project. I mean, that's just, I've talked with urban planners, they say, you know, that's not really the best solution for, for making it sound like Warren Street works. It's not in big buildings, concentrations like that, it's a lot of smaller buildings. So some, one urban planner suggested, you know, that property should be parceled out and sold in that fashion so that you could have, you know, local people developing smaller plots. That's one possibility, I'm not saying that we could make that happen, but certainly weren't part of it. It's amazing that today, I was reading a book about Jane Jacobs, that Ellen and I will be a little plug for our show on Thursday, we'll be interviewing the author. And this quotation from Jane Jacobs was like so unflin, it just freaked me out. She wrote, and she actually touched on revitalizing downtowns. These projects will not revitalize downtown, they will detonate, they will be stable and symmetrical and orderly, they will be clean, impressive and monumental, they will have all the attributes of a well-kept, dignified cemetery. And it just seems like. And I mean, I read that like two hours before coming here. Anyway, thank you, Rob. Oh, Eileen, one more.
Just to be clear, the person you called was not talking.
No, no, Jane Jacobs, the famous.
Just to be clear.
But she was talking about similar housing projects.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Public.
Just briefly, having been here a while, stand up. HDC, HCDPA, my name is Linda Mussum, fourth ward, has just briefly, it's been a laundromat. It's about how you handle money and funds and where it goes and how it goes. I think it's outdated, outmoded, and we lost control. And I think we should get the control back, it belongs in the city's hands, not in a small group of people dictating what's going to happen to the City of Hudson. And that's it. It's been the alphabet soup, was that way when I entered Hudson and it continues to be that way. And if it was another administration, you'd be outraged, speaking from a long history of hanging out in this room. Really, get it back, Andy, stop everything and figure out how to make this work.
Yes, identify yourself too, please.
Julie Nats, and I live in the second ward. And I would like to agree with what has just been said. My, I've attended a few HDC meetings, I watched with not a little horror during this DRI process, the way, just the kind of high-handed manner in which HDC sort of railroaded this process, they wrote the grant that, some of the content was just shocking, it was just truly shocking. It wasn't true, they made it up, they did it because they claimed the state told them to do it. I've written to Sheena Salvino on numerous occasions to address this issue. It could have very, very far-reaching consequences that would be devastating to the City of Hudson, to our waterfront. It's just, these kinds of organizations, I agree, they're just, with these two organizations, one's private nonprofit, one's being publicly funded, hello, it's just, it just is the definition of corruption to me and lack of transparency. And what we want is to take it back. Everything they do, everything they do should be managed by the city government, we are fully capable, we have good people here, and I fully believe that the city should take everything back and that it should all be run by the city government, by you people and your committees.
I just want to say one thing, you mentioned Sheena Salvino, I want to point out that her position on HDC is a visible one. She essentially has however many members of the board, but she has to account for herself too. So her, it puts her in a very awkward position, I think. And I'm just trying to be a little bit sympathetic to her because, you know, who's her boss?
Well, that's one of my issues, is exactly, it's so unclear.
No, I understand, it makes it very difficult for her.
It's very unclear.
I'm just trying to be a little sympathetic to her.
I'm not, but that's okay, because I feel like there were many opportunities where she could have been transparent and in that DRI grant, she could have chosen to tell the truth.
Well, I'm saying that she's been told what to do, that's all.
Right, but you can say no, people can say no, so, sorry.
That's.
I just want to ask.
Identify yourself.
Sure. Carter Roberts, first ward resident. I just wanted to say, I was at that meeting where they were going to select the developer. And there were three developers, not a one of them had any visual presentation. They were going to select these people on like a three-minute song and dance that they were singing, and there was as many people in the room as are here. And I, they hadn't even gone and done site, but this was all after the, after the meeting, they were prepared to make decisions. And I just think that states everything.
In there.
Without visiting them, without seeing their work, without having like a whole display for the people there. That's criminal to me. It's kind of crazy.
You know, I worry about talking too much about it because I know I'm going to get a lot of grief when I go back to that committee. But say nothing, right?
You want to show up.
Everybody shows up, it's very happy. In their defense, all those projects, and you're right, there's no visuals, because they all claim that that's part of the process once the developer's selected. I mean, these developers are putting in, you know, relatively a lot of time. Granted, they're talking about making millions of dollars, so their time is, you know, if it pays off, obviously it's a big deal for them. But, you know, another urban planner pointed out to me recently that these are all developers who have no intimate connection to the City of Hudson.
Of course.
They're taking money out of our city.
In the name of developers.
Exactly. Yes?
This is often our first ward resident, and I did, I am ashamed to say, because it's not really about HDC for me at this moment, nor is it about the developers, because I don't really know of any local Hudson developers that are going to develop a $40 million project tomorrow, but.
There's something with a $40 million project.
Well, I mean, I guess that's what they're projecting, right? Exactly. So I'm speaking more from a concerned lover of the Hudson waterfront. We have the Basilica Hudson, we've been there for eight years, I live in my house overlooking the WIC, the CAS, the Basilica, the river, the mountain. I am ashamed to say that was my first meeting, I went last week to the HDC meeting after submitting, and I have shared it with my first ward alderman, but I'll share it with the rest of the aldermen here that they, and all the women, is I am deeply concerned, and it's not about poking holes in HDC, which everybody else can if they want, it's actually just what does Hudson want with its future? I've sat through all those DRI meetings, we've, there is an LWRP that is not done, there's a beautiful Dunn's thing, there's a public park that's not used very much, there's a truck route under lots of legal disputes, there's no sidewalks, if we run a business with no sidewalks, no light, no nothing, that would be, to put a random person in that massive lot without having, the city right now is out there driving for the first time ever, Hudson might actually have a vision for what it wants. We just listened to six months, lots of people show up at DRI meetings, people want parks, people want affordable things, people want, there's a potential for the most exciting extension of our downtown, right on the waterfront. And if we give it away to a private developer from Saratoga, we're going to build around them? How is, how can that be? And I'm not even saying HDC aren't good at what they do, I'm saying we need to know first what we want. And we need to ask them something, that's all I did was slow down, please, let's listen to what Hudson is learning through all these processes. There is so many things in motion and it would be devastating to give it away without having heard what Hudson wants. And there's so much room there, it can be from skating rinks to parks to affordable housing, to jobs, to grocery stores, but why can't Hudson make the plan and not some stranger that's never been here? That's what I'm just.
Volunteers.
Well, volunteers that don't necessarily have urban planning in their background. Who are the, I mean, I mean, with all respect to them, and they took a long time to speak to me at the last meeting, but they couldn't really answer what the rush was. I was like, why do you need to go so quickly? They mentioned the DRI thing, I mean, I have applications in the DRI as well, I understand the timeline, they need, but you don't need to give it away this month, well, there's no visuals, but I understand, you know, defending those developers, it's not about the visuals either, because they, they're not going to put a million dollars into something they might not get. Don't even waste their time, it's counterproductive for the developers to be doing a song and dance when Hudson doesn't even know what it wants. We, you guys have, you're the elected officials of every single one of us, between us speaking, we could probably figure out a better plan of what should be down there than the HDC and developers from Saratoga.
I think I'm.
Absolutely right. And that's where the conflict comes in between us as a common council and those group of volunteers, you know, because they have their own separate agenda and they are placed there as volunteers, but we represent the city, we represent our constituents, and in my opinion, those group of volunteers, they do, if anybody's taking their time volunteering, that is work, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they reflect the city and the people in the city. And that has always been my concern. And especially in the people in the second ward, when you have that building there, but those two groups having their meetings monthly, and the people in the second ward see nothing, see nothing. So it's very hard to even, you know, to say, oh, I want to stand by and support them because they do a lot of good work. No, not when you represent the people in the city and who's getting that good work? Who's getting, who's reaping from those benefits and opportunities? Not the second ward, to tell you that.
Right, and the common council should probably know what, I mean, what has, what has the HDC delivered to Hudson in the last five, 10 years? That's a good, I mean, I can't say, because I'm not a specialist, but I would encourage all common council members to discover that.
I agree with your response to what you're saying, and it was Eileen who kind of looked into this very early in this session, this term of the council, and that is, almost any project before then, it's going to need city us to affirm it, because a lot of them are asking for parcels of city property, and that can't be done without council approval. So the good news in a way is that all those projects sink or swim here. So we will have some say if for some reason we can't halt what they're doing. I just thought I'd let you know. Rob.
And this kind of goes back, and it's a theme of, the theme last month was the, with the correction of the map with the historic district, that we have these piecemeal pieces that, you know, really as a council, we have an opportunity to dust off that LWRP and dust off the comprehensive plan and really fix this so that we're not just kind of, it's not a whack-a-mole situation where it's actually, this is it, like this is what we can do with the community, with the input, with everybody involved. And personally, I want to be on the record, I'm not, I did not bring this up to bash HDC, I brought it up to use it to, because first I heard about it, but secondly, it's just another example of we're trying to correct a section of the waterfront instead of looking at everything and figuring out how we can have it be a hundred-year vision.
Did you want to put any of the board of the HDC that appointed by whom? The HDC members of HDC. And in fact, at one point, at one point, there was four elected officials on it and they.
That was the backdoor meeting, let us know.
And it's definitely, two members.
They decided to put the majority minority lead and.
They got him off.
At the backdoor meeting, before the first meeting happened, they were meeting.
So there were four in the history. Anybody else on the council want to speak first?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Where, what is the status, center down at, of the Restore New York for the dollar?
Of the what?
The Restore New York Fund? Why are we not moving forward in that aspect, do you know, part of it?
That, as you know, is a separate grant, and the reason is pretty simple. To take those funds, we have to use a private developer. And we don't want to do, I mean, the mayor and I both agree that that's a terrible idea. We're trying to keep that public space.
Okay, so private developer has to go in.
Right, exactly. And it's, you know, it's terrible, I mean, not terrible, I mean, it's just another government handout, but it's not the first time the city has said no to government money, because, I'll give you a deeper story, who knows, but it wasn't made clear by whoever made the application that that was going to be part of the application, that we had to use a private developer. We thought, not me personally, but whoever was doing it, thought that that money could be used regardless of how, just to restore the building.
Right.
Without any developer involved. So I don't know who's responsible for that, but it's done. If done is done for now. But there is money, there is a DRI proposal to restore Dunn.
That's an example of the city owning that building is such an amazing, we have confidence that the city will plan something for the city as opposed to a private entity planning with a private entity. That's, and I'm not, I don't know what the right answer is, I don't expect all, you know, things to be shifted overnight, but it's more a matter of if everyone of you here takes this seriously and you do have a loud voice to the HDC, whether they legally have to listen or not, it's like the City of Hudson, whether it's us as individuals or you as a common council, can say, can we hold on and see what happens with the DRI, what happens with the haul road, what happens with trucks and trains? And I just, it would be tragic to develop it too quickly and without a good plan. It would just be really tragic for this beautiful waterfront. And anyway, thank you for listening.
Would you like to?
Yes, I think there's been some pretty harsh characteristics tossed around, and I don't think they're narrative, criminals certainly, if someone knows of that, someone should do something about that. I don't, I never, I never did see that. Those are folks just like us, doing the best they can on the board they wanted to serve on, and there should be disagreement, it will have to come through the council for certain pieces, probably the IDA will be involved, there is a mechanism, it probably would be useful for it. I think to propose to get rid of it, I hope you're very mindful and understanding exactly what we're dismantling, and that we respect the folks who chose to serve.
Sure. Anybody else in the councils first? Ellen, firstly, would you identify yourself?
I'm Ellen Thurston, I live in the first ward. I almost said third. Is, it seems to me that these auxiliary organizations, HDC, HCDPA, IDA, no, HIDA, and there are others, I'm sure, should be reporting on a regular basis to the common council, maybe through the Economic Development Committee. They, you know.
Sheena does report to the economic.
Oh, she does? Oh, good, I didn't know that, but not when I've been at a meeting, I guess, so I didn't know that. Anyhow.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mr.?
Yes.
Julie Metz. I would say that, that to that point, I would press further and say, not only should they be reporting, but they should be under, you know, if they were allowed to continue to exist, they have to be, they have to become, it really should all be work that is done under government, as part of the city government. There's nothing that they do that city government officials cannot do. And what I've observed, is my observation, and with respect to the time that you served on it, I can't speak to that, and I've only lived here for a few years, but I'll say that my observation so far, and I've lived here now for four years, is that every time I go and everything of theirs that I read, I am just appalled. I'm appalled that they're even allowed to exist, that they, that they are doing work that government should be doing, and they do it in a high-handed manner. And I know that they're volunteering, but, you know, that doesn't make a difference. It's, I think, an abuse of power, and it should all be done transparently, utterly transparently, with meetings, hello, at noon, at noon, when people are working. The meeting should be at this time of the day when people, more people can come. All of their meetings, there should be no executive sessions except in an emergency. And they should have to present everything they do before the people. This is public money we're talking about. You know, this little mixing of private and public, it's just wrong. It's just wrong, 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 and it's not transparent, and it isn't right. And to what Melissa was saying, I mean, the consequences could be devastating. I mean, we only get this waterfront opportunity one time, and if it's not managed well, you know, we'll be looking at some terrible consequences down the line. People in Hudson should have an opportunity to know exactly what's going on. It should be discussed in full, preferably voted on, or I don't know. It should all be done in an open way where people can really understand, instead of this, you know, money grubbing with private developers. It's just not right. It's just not right. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll be brief. I did sit on the council, the county economic council, and they're very interested in Hudson, the county. Mike Tucker is very eager to be a part of our development process. Just fair warning. They have already loaned the city of Hudson some money, I don't know if you know that.
$95,000.
Yes, so, fair warning. You know, Hudson's is a very exciting place, and there's a lot of interest in Hudson, and the county is deeply interested as well. Going back to an old topic, the LWRP, I think it's your document. Where is it? What's going on, and why isn't it done? Counsel?
I'm embarrassed, you know, but you were the last one holding it.
I can happily say that I've handed it off to the mayor, so he's not the one who's holding it. But I believe, I don't want to speak for him, but we had a, the RFP, I'll take one more step back. We finally got the contract this past year from the state for the money that they're giving us to help us re-update the LWRP. We wrote the bulk of the RFP to send out to consultants to help us with that. As I took on the role at the youth department, I handed that over to the mayor, and I believe the next step, I should rule that him say it, is probably to put together a waterfront advisory steering committee. And I think he's working on that.
I will say, I believe it's the council's document. Mr. Council President, am I wrong? Am I right?
I'll check.
I think I'm pretty right.
Can you have your feet up? Can you check into that, can you, please? What, Carla?
I just want to also, I don't mean to trash any particular organization or anything either, but like Tiffany said, she said they have their own agenda, and I think that's really, it's like, what is that agenda? It should be all of one, you know? It should be the same as the city.
Carol, I was during First Ward, I just have a question. The $95,000 from CEDC, what was it for?
It was a loan to, oh, gosh, how did I remember? We, I believe we accepted it in this, in this council. I'll get back to you on that. Rick would know. It was a short-term loan so that we could do, so that, I think it was to HDC.
Yes.
It was to HDC, not to the city.
Oh. Good question, Carol. Beware. It's to the HDC.
Do you remember what it was for, I believe?
I believe it was the, to purchase the CSX.
Oh, that's...
Was it?
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's a virtuous thing. It's a good thing.
Right, well, that's what it's for.
To purchase, you have to pay the piper.
Yeah, all right.
I don't dispute it was not a good thing, but you have to be careful where you take your loans.
Any other comments of business or...
Rich, one other thing. Obviously, economic development is going to be fun, so if you want to start this economic development meeting, which is on the 17th, just thought I'd put the agenda out there now as well before I upload it, that we will be talking, we are in current negotiations with Mid-Hudson Cable regarding the renewal of their franchise agreement, so that will, they will be there at 6 o'clock. I think the documentation has been uploaded from last month's meeting, and it is a non-exclusive contract. We are discussing the terms and conditions of that contract, so they have the right of access to, to lay the, the cable. And that, because our current franchise agreement has expired. So, anyone who's interested is on the 17th, at 6 o'clock.
And also announcement that the finance committee is formulating the guidelines for those who want to apply for the fund, for event funds, which is what we're calling it now, since it's not under the Hudson Economic Committee. Finance will be handling the event fund, and he's developing the guidelines that should be ready shortly. Yes?
None, very shortly, yes, I just got the file.
And we'll start taking applications. Come on.
Yeah, I just have a quick announcement. May 21st, the next police committee meeting, we'll be having the chief of police from Albany come down to do a presentation on a program called Handle With Care that we're hoping to get more information about to maybe implement it into the city. And to give a quick synopsis of it, it's basically a program where if there's an issue with a family, say there's a raid or sexual abuse or anything like that, police will notify the school the next day in a letter that says, this youth has been a victim of trauma, handle with care. So it wouldn't be something that, it would break confidentiality, but it would just notify teachers, youth program workers, and different entities in the city that, you know, to handle this particular youth with care. Because a lot of times, we see youth that suffer from trauma, and then they have behavioral issues at, you know, school or the youth center or anywhere else, and we need to be prepared for those issues. So that's May 21st at 6:00 p.m.
And I assume the chief is invited?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn, perhaps? Rob, second? Sure shot. All in time. All right. We're all here with solid pressure.